Welcome everybody to September 13th. We're going to the planning board. Are you going to be in the board?
I can, yeah.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the world with which we stand, one nation under God, in this world with which we live.
To Luca.
Here.
Van Meter.
Here.
Ryan. Kes Murzki.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Mehibek. Chase.
Here.
Scapero.
Here.
Okay.
So our agenda tonight will include a Zeta presentation as Mayor Kaufman mentioned. After the Zeta presentation will allow for public comments. Thirty minute session, three minutes apiece, ten to the maximum. And followed by that, we're going to establish, our agenda is establish a planning board as a lead agency for this project. Followed by a move to bring the matter to the zoning board for some consideration of variances. And then later on in the agenda, classifying the product and maybe kind of open the seeker process. As Mayor Kaufman mentioned, what we will not be doing tonight is passing judgment on any of the variance issues. Those issues are a matter for the zoning board to deal with and which will be meeting later on in this process. So what we're going to be doing tonight is moving those requests for variances to the zoning board. So first on the agenda is a Zeta presentation. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sir, Robert Mars. I'm in the voting board here in the middle.
Which is easier for you to say, to see up there. Maybe in the middle it's fine.
No problem at all. So my name is Robert Mars. I'm attorney of good Sofia Gilman. I may have seen reference to or have heard of the name of Betsy Brug. She is the principal attorney on this matter. And she will likely be here for future meetings, but I'm standing in for her today. So if you see her in the future, we're of the same firm, don't be confused. With me here today is a number of individuals from the out, you know, Arianna and Roger who speak tonight, and then as well as Dave and Adam as well. So after I sit down, you'll hear from Roger and Arianna about the more technical components of the project, about the site plan itself. I want to really talk tonight, well personally, I want to say we're so excited to be here tonight to introduce this project to you all. We're very excited to be here. We're very excited to begin this discussion and meet with you all tonight here, which some of the community members have to say. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. As you know, this project is to develop vacant land at the existing dead end that's by Reed Street. The property consists of a hundred and, for the project, consists of 138 dwelling units. There's a mix of one, two, and three bedroom dwelling units that make part of the project. And there's also a community area and a playground area. It's a very, very nice project. We're very excited to present to you. I'm going to let my colleagues talk more about that. I want to talk mainly about procedure, although it looks like, based on the agenda, that a lot of my topics will be either have already been addressed or will be addressed in the future. So bear with me, and I promise that I will not fall into the entering trap of speaking for too long. So as you know, and as we just discussed, you know, we have a simultaneous procedure or process going on with the zoning board. So we have two variance requests, an area variance and a use variance in front of the zoning board. That, I believe, is going to be on for October 22nd. We're very excited for that process to start. We're very excited to present to the ZBA. And the use variance frankly is critical for this project. We need the use variance in order to operate this project, to develop this project in an R1 residential zone district. So these two processes will be going on simultaneously. For purposes of this board, obviously, we're looking for a site plan. The goal here really tonight with that in mind is frankly just to introduce the project, to hear from this board, to hear from the community members, to receive feedback, to respond to that feedback. If we are able to respond to something tonight, we'll happily do so. If we are unable to respond, and we want to give a more thorough answer, we will do so in the future, either through a written submission, studies, or IMX meeting. We see this, and I think the board sees this as well, as really the first step, right? This is the first meeting, it's certainly not the last, and we're not going to be making a determination today. So we really want to see this to sort of get started, get the ball rolling, and begin the discussion. So I also wanted to talk about procedure. It looks like you've already intended to establish yourselves as the agency, which was going to be my request today. So I will state that that is my request, but obviously it looks like you're already in the process of doing it. So as promised, I'm going to get out of your way. I will answer any questions, especially legal and procedural that you have. I will be here immediately, but I'm going to go off to Arianna and talk more about the project.
Thank you. My name is Arianna Lent. I'm part of the development team representing the town this day. So as Rob mentioned, we're at a constant level design. We're not at full drawing set, but I wanted to come present in front of the planning board to get that feedback as we progress through our design set and get a lot more detailed with architectural and civil, which Roger will speak to us next. But high level is, right now it's 18 acres of vacant, under-urbanized land. Our vision is to develop community family rental housing with community facility centered to the site plan. This plan is in alignment with our former county plan, encouraging housing and increasing the supply of housing of new construction and specifically workforce housing. It also aligns with the draft of the City of Little Falls Conference Plan back in 2018 to create more new attractive, new construction housing, allowing housing for choice for residents who may not want homeownership but rental opportunity. So our goal here is to create safe, stable, quality housing for individuals to grow and prosper. We have 138 rental units. Forty-one of those are one bedrooms, 86 two bedrooms, and 11 three bedrooms. Those are spread out across the site. You'll see a southern portion of a cluster of four residential buildings and a northern cluster of five residential buildings. And centered to the plan is a community and management facility, that's one story building. And here we'll have a management suite, on-site leasing, community services, and community amenities such as fitness, community room, kitchenette, gathering place for residents, and then an outdoor playground for youth and children, as well as green spaces for seating and outdoor nature. And then to speak a little bit about the architecture of it. So we are proposing two and three story buildings. The site generally, steeply, topography goes from the east to west. So coming down Reed Street, it drops down. I'm going to use that topographic change to build into the hillside so that it allows the buildings to go down with the land, minimizing the used sheds and utilizing the trees in that area to create a visual protection between this and the neighboring buildings. And of those, the nine residential buildings, the winged front doors for residents to access spilling out into the green space and really mimicking in the architecture of the surrounding buildings, traditional sloped roofs. Many of the buildings around are single-family homes that are two stories, some have doiler of the sloping roof. So trying to bring those in so that we're getting together the existing architecture with something new. And I think I'll pause there and hand it over to the civil side, Roger.
Okay, great. So Roger Keating from Little Falls Associates. As Arianna said, I'm a civil site engineer for the project. You might walk back and forth to the map just because a lot of things we're going to be talking about related to the site plan. As Arianna said, it's an 18 acre site approximately. The overall land disturbance associated with the project is around seven and a half acres. So what that will require us to do is to open and clear about seven and a half acres. And about three and a half of it when we're done will be your buildings, your roads, your curvaceous areas. So on the map, I tried to depict that a little bit. It's hard to read. We'll make sure that we provide some information later so that we can show where those clearing and grading limits are. Sorry, sir. That will end up these areas to the side, which are along the stream that traverses the site. We're going to try to maintain as much of that existing vegetation as possible. So we're at this point, using the topography and the lay of the land to help step the buildings down so we can create our parking spaces in between the buildings. So as we have our layout, and sorry, apologize, sir. The buildings here kind of bookend our parking. That parking is in the middle of those areas. So helps with a little bit of the screening of those spaces. Do you see the? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Can you see the chart okay? Do we need to move it?
We can move the boards in the middle and for people afterwards, they may want to look at that or leave it behind even if you want it. So Reed Street becoming part of the project site. As Arianna said, the project has split with the buildings. So as you can see on the map there, you'll see the cluster of buildings on the upper left-hand side of the page with the balance of those on the more central portion of the site. The nine buildings are kind of split between those two sides. There'd be the community space slash daycare type facility in the middle of the project. As we go through the project, we have parking spaces that are consistent with the zoning requirements of one parking space per unit. Site lighting is what we'll be doing here. This is the type of funding that we're pursuing, requires us to do what's called a dark sky compliant light, which just helps reduce glare. It would be primarily used in the areas of the parking lots, that would be between the buildings. So also help creating some offer with the lighting that may be a concern of some people. We've done a preliminary road analysis for both of the, for SIR. Provided that to the cities. We've had some initial conversations with the city engineer. From a capacity standpoint, it looks like we have ample capacity and service in sight. And also, one of the topics is related around traffic. As we advance this project forward, one of the things we'll be doing is conducting a traffic study for this project. The traffic study will look at the traffic that exits out onto Reed Street to the state highway. Will look to either side of that intersection for sight lines as well as traffic counts. It's important to note, we want to make sure we're doing those traffic counts during the school year. So that's upon us now, so we're able to be able to do those once you're moving forward with the project. And then lastly, what I think I want to just touch upon is stormwater management. So as I mentioned earlier, the project disturbs over acre of land. In New York State, we're required to do what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan for any project that disturbs over an acre of land. And what that means is that we have to capture and treat the stormwater before it leaves our project site. So we need to treat that stormwater, and then we also need to control the rate that leaves the project. So the rate of the stormwater that leaves the site under the developed condition has to match and not exceed the existing condition that's out there today. And so that's a state permit that we get through New York State DEC. And as part of this project, we'll end up incorporating some green infrastructure components, fire retention, rain gardens are the types of practices that we hope to deploy. So they make a good landscaping component as well to the project. And those will be located primarily along the bottom portion of the site prior to discharge to the adjacent street. I think with that, that's my big overview for Arianna. So if there's anything closing that you'd like to do, I'll turn it back. Thank you very much.
I think that was a good overview. I think we'll pause there, but we're excited about this community family housing project and seeking feedback through planning board and zoning board as a next step. I believe about that.
I wonder if I could ask your permission there, just a quick question of you. Is the project named Zeta or Reed Street at this point?
Reed Street Development.
Okay. And then the, okay. And the other question I had, in your original package, ICAN was involved, and you were going to provide certain services there. Is that still the case?
Yes, ICAN is supportive services. They are not owner in the property, but maybe, and a service provider.
Okay. So do we need the package, the application, to be under the correct name as a point, a legal point?
Yes.
Okay. Can you handle that, of course?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had.
I have a question on ICAN. Are they going to be actually present in an office to provide services?
Yes, they'll have on-site office within the purple center building.
Do you think one parking spot per unit plus space for workers is going to be enough parking? You've got some there, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. Will there be two people with a car?
Yeah, we have 148 parking stalls. So it is one per unit, which would be 138 plus 10 additional for that community building. And in our history, we have done a lot of affordable housing and studies on what our composition of one car or more, between that and shoots out to one to one. Feel confident with that management of it and we still do it.
So we got any comments? Do we have any comments? Anyone that would like to speak, either for or against?
What was it? We're opening the floor of public comments right now. So there's 30 minutes sets off for public comments if you'd like to speak. There are a lot of these stuff to vote. Try to keep the comments to three minutes first.
If you haven't signed the sheet, be sure to do so.
I comment, how do they plan to deal with the traffic going into Reed Street? It's going to be over 100 times, not 100% or, over 100 times more cars coming in and out of there. And that's a head of business, I would say. Because right now it's like one or two of them. Basically. And I can't, I'm not saying he's safe, just being, but it's going to be at 100%, at least 100 times. Except everybody only leaves once a day that lives there. And I got a feeling that, you know, that's not going to be the case. What do you plan on dealing with that on the street?
What do you find is the average suburb of Alice Street is 13, around 13?
Okay, so, a thousand times. Fair enough, you know, it's just.
And I heard that the developers or the presenters mentioned that they were going to do a traffic study, right?
I do a traffic study every day. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. It's just getting to know, it's not the easiest place to get in and out. There's a line park, a few hundred feet of water, and along the state highways, 55 miles an hour, not far above it. And I just came here. I usually go that way if I'm not coming down to Little Falls. And I came home that way from work, Burger Road, we turned onto another street, 169. And people are right on my tail because really most expects anybody to turn. But I, and people are always right on my tail. I can imagine I people the same thing what they're saying, what's wrong with this guy? Anyway, that's my comment, basically. How do you plan on dealing with all the traffic?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a long question. What you should be creating is the gigantic closure here of one group of people. Destruction potentially quite dangerous should Reed Street be blocked for any reason, or an accident occur on Reed Street. There would, as I mentioned, would be no way for fire trucks, rescue vans, or anyone to get in and out. Is there any plan for a second entrance? Right now, there's no plan for a second entrance into the project site. We are looking at the possibility of a boulevard style type of entrance as you come into the development to kind of help those travel concerns so that there's potentially no allow for traffic down one side or the other in the event of emergency situation. So we are looking at that.
And I'll note just for the last comment for this one, so we will be working obviously with the local fire department, with department transportation. We'll make sure that all the interested agencies that will be really experts in this field are involved in this process and are comfortable with the project before this process concludes. So appreciate the comments, and that's how I plan to address them.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public?
Please. Please, yes, sign in if you haven't already. Okay, thank you.
My name's Steve Weiss.
Can you speak up a little? Sorry, we just, it echoes you.
My name is Steve Weiss. I am a resident of Little Falls. I've been here for a couple months since previously on the planning board and town board of Root. I'm currently working with Ken and Gary again for planning on the DRI grants. I didn't know if this was tied to that at all, a little bit to the party. I guess my first question is that, is this tied into the DRI and your for grants at all?
No.
No? Okay. Where's the funding coming from?
Where's the funding coming from? That would be a question to the advocate.
We're working with New York State HCR. Okay, cool. I guess the last question that's really need to be answered now, it's something to sort of just chew on, because I don't know if anyone in here has seen the core planning that Ken and Gary are working on currently. They are also looking at housing for choice and rental opportunities, but they're looking at grants specifically to improve existing housing on Main Street, providing improvement incentives for local business owners to improve the apartments of their places of business, and keeping it affordable and whatnot. It's a lower environmental impact. So I just didn't know if Little Falls was chewing on that at all. And if not, I deeply recommend just touching base, even if it's not the same funding source, just to see the Ken and Gary core plan are sort of up to, because it's really beautiful. I go to a lot of different planning boards, zoning, town board meetings. I've served on also for a long time back in Florida. And the sort of cross-party collaboration that's happening in those towns is freaking incredible, excuse my language. It's the most brain bouncing and positivity I've seen in a space where they're really invested in preserving the character of the town, preserving the environment, and still finding a way to provide affordable housing for people like me and my friends that want to stay in areas like this and work and live here.
Yeah. Are you a Little Falls resident?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I am that. Well, fortunately, I'm personally, I'm also part of the group. But I really like being here, so I thought I would start with a little bit. But that is the end of my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. Are you folks prepared to answer the questions on the pilot program?
I mean, I would say that would be a question we can deal with in the future. You know, I don't think it's necessarily relevant to the site plan conditions, which is what we were prepared to talk about tonight.
Okay.
Then what else? Are you going to comment publicly here? Come to the podium, please.
Sure. And as we've been along the way through Little Falls, I, I guess it's more of a question than a comment. I'm always going to echo giving life to our existing structures for housing. I guess I'm just curious why we would clear an established ecosystem to build brand-new housing. We have existing buildings that are not being used. We obviously have so many buildings throughout town that need help. Why would we build something new? I guess I'm just curious where this came from, because I've heard so many different thoughts and opinions on how we can really rewireize our town. And this isn't one that we came from publicly. It seems like it came from one small team. It doesn't seem like something is benefiting the town at all, but benefiting a few. So I'm just wondering why we cannot dive into the things that we are, do have.
Well, the city does have some initiatives being considered to address some of those rehab issues that you just mentioned. There's some DRI funding that could be spent on rehab of some apartments on industrial businesses. Also, there's some projects that the Housing Authority, Little Falls Housing Authority is undertaking to address some of the other housing needs. So it's endeavoring.
Yeah, this is not, this project didn't originate from the city. This is a private project that came, they're appealing to the city. So the city does have programs, in fact, working with Herkimer County legislators to free up some of what we call the zombie houses. And so we have a program, I'm working on the specifics of it with Urban Renewal. They've done that in the past. And so to release some of the properties so that we can return them to single-family homes and put them back on the tax rolls, which would be very helpful to the city at this moment in time, as you might imagine. So we do, we're working on that. And the DRI project that you're talking about for Main Street is a $600,000 project, very limited amount of money, but it does qualify those who participate in that for upper level apartments and things. So we're definitely developing that. When we first did the DRI grant, we found, it was 106, what was it, 65,000 square feet of loft space available to develop for downtown housing. So it's definitely on our radar. We're excited about doing it. But this is a whole different thing. The Zeta or the Reed Street project is not a city project. It is one that is coming to us from a private developer.
That's really interesting to know. I feel that even, even more so than, you know, our city already has projects that we're working on to make housing more affordable for people. Something that we're already working on with the limited funds that we have available. So, you know, why, the reason of the question even more so than why they do a lot of brands and anything new, probably, you know, to be the thing that we're trying to do with what we have existing, the infrastructure we already have. Why then would we do anything? That's the reason of the question.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Our time is up, sorry.
The mayor reported 165,000?
No, 65,000.
Any others? Please go.
Hi, I'm Eddie Rose. I'm a lifelong resident of Little Falls. So today, I believe, a traffic and environmental or water drainage and other studies were discussed. But I would like to know the consequence of these studies, and at what point does the data suggest that this is not feasible plan? And are the planning and zoning board supposed to, how are they supposed to provide an opinion on this project without receiving these studies first, as opposed to just blindly signing off on what seems to be just the concept of a plan? So I ask my general question is, when you have this data provided to us, how are we supposed to sign off on it before? And also, what is the standard of the data being received to us? It just doesn't seem feasible.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit. In the planning board, where we are right now, we're really focused on site review. So we are, further in the agenda, we will be voting on moving the request for the zoning, the use variance, to the ZBA for their up or down vote. Okay? And depending on how that goes, the seeker would have to be completed before planning would make a judgment with regard to the site review. There are environmental concerns that we would have there. The way it's laid out, the drainage, all of that sort of thing will play a role in the site plan review. So planning is not ready to make, to vote up or down on site plan review at this moment in time. So my assumption would be that if it goes to ZBA, then comes back, it's up or down, whatever decision is made, either stops there, or it comes back to planning, and planning would then continue the seeker.
All right, thank you.
My name is Rebecca Wood, and my mom lives on Rose Street. I'd like to know the traffic study, how is that done? Because I can tell you what the traffic is from living there and being there. How is the traffic study done? I didn't mention any kind of stuff, the gator. The traffic study, I want to know how, what entails a traffic study? What do they do?
Roger, do you want to take that?
Sure. So, as part of the traffic study, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll estimate what the traffic generation from the project is, and then they'll also go out and actually do the traffic counts. So, we'll go out, we'll count the traffic on the roads that are surrounding the project site, and then they'll build a model as relates to how the public service of that roadway is impacted or not by the cars being added to the network. Also, we heard some sightline, items under the product line, line of sight at the intersection. So, as part of the traffic study, what we also do is go out and measure those, survey those sightlines to then evaluate the speed and what the sightlines are. So, it's part of data collection, and then it's recording that data collection back and seeing that that's a state road, that traffic, so it'll also be coordinated with review with CO2.
Reed Street is a single-lane road right now?
Okay.
Is it?
But I, right now, I believe it's a two-way traffic, because there's only, there's only one way and one way out, so there has to be two-way traffic from that perspective. But as part of the project, we'll be doing that.
So, there's two houses on either side of Reed Street, sorry. Would you tear them down?
No, we're not tearing down houses.
So, the roads can run right beside your house?
Where the road is to that.
You may have to buy Reed Street.
Not sure, we would have to finish the traffic, so you'd understand what the line of sight and things like that.
Are the tractor-trailers going to be going down into this complex?
There's no need for tractor-trails to be going down into a complex.
Fire trucks?
No. Obviously, there will be fire trucks, emergency vehicles, and access, as the council indicated, we would be reviewing those access points with, with essential services as part of the project. Who will be conducting the traffic study? We'll be doing the traffic study, we'll have our traffic engineers throughout performing traffic counts. That study then will be submitted to the city and as well as New York State CO2. Anything, anyone else?
And this lady to the left here, who's been trying to, to speak for a while.
My name is David Diadati, I live on Valley Brook Drive. This project will be in my backyard. I will be able to look out, instead of looking at the trees, I will look across the creek, and I will see the backside of this building. Now, my main question is, how many section eights are going to be available? And if there's more than a couple, or seven or eight, or a dozen, why does ICAN, a service coordination who need to have a place in housing development in Little Falls that's supposed to be for the betterment of the community, for people to have better places to rent? Why do you need a service agency there?
Do, so, sorry, let me, so, I, there's a couple of questions, which one would you like to answer?
Either one.
So, at this point, we don't, we don't know who, you know, what the source of income will be for the tenants, but again, tonight, I want to be clear, we're focused on the site plan conditions of the site. The planning board doesn't regulate people or which types of people can inhabit residences. So, you know, we want to focus on screening on traffic, on the conditions of the site, which will be the focus of this board's.
Those that live there are concerned with what's going to be going on in that development. I worked for Medicaid Service Coordination for almost 18 years with the state. I know what service coordination agencies do, I know the extent that they get into people's lives, and I know that sometimes the people whose lives they control are not what we want to have. They contribute nothing, absolutely nothing to the state, whether it's money-wise, or culture-wise, or anything. And I'm really concerned with ICAN, they seem to be sticking their noses in all over the place, all up and down the valley, with the Herkimer Valley and the rest of the places. There's, there's really no need for a place in Little Falls where somebody goes to rent an apartment and lives and knows that there's a service coordination down the street, you know, over in the next building. What are they there for? They're certainly not there for the majority of the tenants. That's my question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Peter Gills.
Can you, sorry, can you speak a little louder?
A little louder, let me turn my hand here. My name is Peter Gills, from Chover, Vermont, but my sister-in-law is Nancy Witten, 30-year-old place. And she lived here a long time. So, Nancy and I went through the plans as they are today, and I realized that they're very early on. We had three comments, two having to do with planning. And one, the first one was already mentioned, that it does look like a cul-de-sac of a cul-de-sac. There's only one entrance for emergency services, and if you have a problem, that one entrance can be blocked. The second one with planning had to do more with speed output project, is that you have residents that are around the project, I believe they're all half-acre, one-acre lots, things like that. The stated zoning, I think, for this area is 10,000 square feet, so that's about a quarter acre lot. And I think that equates to a density of about 70-plus units on this piece of property. There's going to be more use than that of the bigger buildings. So, the zoning envision, single-family homes or duplexes on this, on this piece of property, and the scale is going to be quite different. Typically, when you have zoning, you have transitions from one-acre lots to half-acre, to quarter, to, you know, zero-lot lots, things like that. And my comment is, is there going to be, or has there been, a visualization analysis to see what the impact of the scale of this project is on the surrounding neighbors? And is there a way to lessen that impact of scale? There's things you can do with vegetation, there's things you can do with building elevation, there's also things that you could do within the development. You could go from single-family homes to duplexes to more dense. And many times, the visualization analysis, excuse the word, helps you with identifying where those transitions are.
Roger, do you want to come ahead and add?
Yeah, I think a visualization analysis is something we're very much looking into. I think that that does help the planning board and members of the community to understand exactly what this will look like. So, as the progress of this process, and obviously, the zoning board process is ongoing as well, that's something we're looking to, for sure. So, that's very important.
Anyone else?
Yes, the, I think you have two water runoff pools to take the water runoff from the accretive areas. Taking into consideration the change in climate in the last few years, have the standards changed for building the pools and the size of the runoff pool?
Yes.
To be enough to protect both pools from rain and snow and spring?
Yeah, so, the standards have just been updated by New York State D.C., they just re-adopted. New stormwater design mandate, I think it's about two months now that the new mandate's come out for updating all of the stormwater practices, green infrastructure, and a lot of that's factoring in many of the things that you're mentioning, because it is never changing climate, you know, from after start. And like I said before, the mind is in circle neighborhood, so we are required to design all the stormwater management practices and employees that have required.
Anyone else?
Hey, my name is Sam Leanne, I'm from Little Falls. I just wanted to clarify across something that I got out of earlier. I worked through the comprehensive plan and could not find anywhere where it suggested zoning variance since we're high density. Everywhere I've read, the 2018 comprehensive plan brought three bodies that are existing, many water homes, but for residents who are up, 20% vacancy rate. That is an enormous vacancy rate of many homes that can be rehabilitated to provide safe homes for families, allow families to build generational wealth, pass on to their children and their family members, and very importantly, considering our city's financial condition, we put that in actual and bring money back to our, our school district, our infrastructure, our police force, and the fire department. So, maybe I missed something, but I really appreciate you guys showing us where it's at, that the city needs zoning variance to provide high-density homes and people's backyards.
Just to note that P-57 and P-8 of the comprehensive plan did seek to reduce structure and to increase housing supply, is that correct?
In the 2018 Little Falls comprehensive plan?
Anyone else?
I have two questions. You mentioned the architecture would fit in with the houses in the neighborhood, and I don't think that's the case. I don't think it matches anything in the neighborhood, and we will see that towering above all our small houses. One, one of your buildings takes up from Reed Street, I looked on the map, it takes up the corner house, the house across from me and another house lot. That's giant, that's giant compared to our little houses, and I don't think the architecture fits. Will there be another public meeting where people can voice their concerns? Because many people were not allowed even in that last meeting, they were stopped at the door. That's my question. People want to speak.
The zoning board feels is a public hearing, and that's, we're planning on October 22nd, and so, we're setting the right year schedule. I think that's going to do it for your comments at this point, we've started that. We'll continue, Joe, do you want to go?
I just had one more question. You're going to build a salt rock station, correct?
Same territory, station, yes.
15,000 to 24,000 gallons per day, I understand, can be handled by our filtration plant.
It's a 10,000?
Yes. However, as I understand, there's at times a buildup of sludge in these plants that when the litter may not be able to handle water filtration plant.
Joe, do you have any? I think we were talking about the rate of sewage discharge from the project site. So, I know that the letter that was submitted had essentially a steady flow rate from the developer, but if you're looking at a pump station, you're looking at slug discharge, right? That, that over a short amount of time. And that's the issue that we have come up in the seeker, as well as can the, while our waste water treatment facility can handle that amount, can the sanitary sewer system getting it there handle that slug load?
Yes, and we're happy, we're happy to work with you as we have any of those sorts of things in with the pump controls. The peak factor looks out to be about 45 gallons, I can't remember, it's been a while, so, so, when we get to that point, we'll, we'll dig a little deeper into how to deal with those rates.
Did we have one more comment? Yes.
Josie. Hi, Josie Bell. Is the project still going to be taxed deferred under the pilot program? And given that the city's physically in such a terrible situation right now, with the proper audit after the excellent years, is there still that premise that the tax will be deferred under the pilot program with this project?
So, again, I'll, 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 this is site plan approval, this is something where the board is considering the factors in your, in your vote, and what you consider for site plan approval. We'll certainly deal with pilot when we get to that point, but for the planning board, that's not something that we really tackle.
So, in addition to the many comments we've heard tonight, the planning board here is along with the zoning board to receive several written comments, letters submitted to us, leaving place on the block to share with various boards. Coming close to the public session, I just thank you everyone for the interest, and we appreciate hearing what the general public wants to hear. We appreciate your input, we appreciate your thoughtful, and your comments that we're taking into consideration in the process. Thank you. Finally, the next on the agenda is the establishment, the planning board is the key agency for Reed Street project. Form a motion.
Form a motion.
Have a motion, do a motion, do a something. Here, the second, the second. Little Falls.
Vanier?
Yes.
Mike? Benzowski?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Skidaro?
Yes.
Does anyone have a question? If any audience would give you a quick summary. So the Planning Board will retain the lead agency role, so that all the information to you on here as a partner, our point agency, and we will gather materials. And so whatever happens with this process, as it goes forward, the planning board will be...
Next up on the agenda is moving the Reed Street project request for variances to the zoning board of fields. That will outline, or with some of the projects offered, like outlining variances that will be forwarded to the zoning board.
I think, and I can mention this, I think one that we're most concerned with is the zoning. And so that's really one of the purposes of this, is to move it from where we are right now, because without the zoning variance, nothing else really matters, right? And so, you know, that's what we're really focused on, on the site. Not all the variances that come on at a later point. So that's, that's the one. And we're looking at, you know, where that takes us. Because without it, then there's nothing. We won't have safety, we won't be doing anything. And if it goes forward, then we'll come back to planning, and we'll do our normal procedure with putting the beginning secret code together, and then go back to ZDA with all the details. And we'll do a site plan vote.
Yeah, so the, just, it just read it in there. So the, the use variance says that we can use the property in a way that's not already zoned, right? So it's currently zoned R1. What we propose is not permitted use under the R1 district. We are asking for the use variance to develop this project in our district. We also have an area variance, but as the mayor indicated, you know, frankly, this is a lot less substantial request simply because of its nature. So it's less critical to the project itself.
The motion is that, moving the variance request to zoning board, it's like, it's like...
Deluga?
Yes.
Vanier?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kedzorcy?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yeah.
Chase?
Yes.
Skidaro?
Yes.
If we had the question...
So, Washington, you can classify this project as a type one work, like what you do. And I sort of decided, you took the floor, I thought. Second round.
Deluga?
Yes.
Vanier?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Benzowski?
Yes.
Morgan? Chase?
Yes.
Skidaro?
Yes. Good enough, okay? And last, we're going to hold a super review on the planning board's various information.
So we'll start the super review in a timing timeline, to go to the town, right? Any environmental concerns for the project? And a lot will depend, obviously, on the opinion of the ZBA, the zoning board's authority. But we're interested in getting the paperwork started, and we'll have a background. This is our normal procedure.
Motion to let it happen, please? Yeah, I'm motioning, thank you. Very excited, thank you. Little Falls.
Deluga?
Yes.
Vanier?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Benzowski?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Skidaro?
Yes.